Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of the council, staff, and members of the public to the December 9th council meeting and call this meeting to order. And before I go any further, I just want to mention Mr. Charlebois, who normally sits up here, is sitting down there because his wife isn't well and he's just playing it safe. So if you're going to throw something, throw it that way.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you, worship. And everyone will have to forgive me. I've been doing some hockey tournament yelling over the weekend, so.
That's normal talk for you.
Little less of a voice tonight. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Lucely.
Present.
And that is Quorum, your worship.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odawa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Initiative Act. The town of Petrollia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty Number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with this land and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask any council, councillors, to declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and fill out the necessary paperwork. Deputy Mayor Field.
I've already filed one with that.
Thank you.
I also will have to file.
Okay. I think you are listed as well.
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This time, we'll move us on to the adoption of the agenda before you. I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that on the agenda or on the table for discussion. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. Any discussion regarding the agenda before you? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the minutes of a regular meeting held on November the 12th. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the table for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the special council meeting held on November 26th. And again, I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of town of Petrollia to adopt a circulated minutes of the special meeting of council held on November 26, 2024.
Any discussion from council? If not, all those in favor of those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the minutes of public information session regarding the 2025 budget. We have minutes. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file as information notes of the December 2nd, 2024, public information session held regarding the 2025 budget.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to the moment of reflection. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand. Please be seated. That'll take us now to the council roundtable announcements, and we rotate that. And tonight, Deputy Mayor Field will start, please.
Thank you. Just want to try not to cough now that I said it. I will. Just want to acknowledge the weekend. We had our Christmas in the park, our parade, and our Christmas market. I just want to congratulate all the staff and the volunteers. I've been lining up the parade for a number of years, and I couldn't believe how many people were walking and taking part in the floats. So it was likely one of the biggest parades we've had in a number of years. So hats off to the whole team.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And it was a great event, and I'll speak to it later on as well. Counselor Clark.
Nothing outside of what's already been said.
Thank you. Counselor Hyatt.
I have nothing to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patel.
In addition, just a great weekend, and as we continue our celebrations of 150, and it was great to see the community support the event as well. The streets were full all the way through the parade route. So it was great.
Thank you, Counselor Patel. Counselor O'Hara.
On the weekend, we, our 150 committee, put together a float again this year for the 30th anniversary, and all our volunteers wrote terrific help, and staff also, big help. And then looking forward to New Year's Eve, we hope to have everybody out for a fun night. I believe it starts at 4:00 in the afternoon, and goes fireworks are at 8:00. And then we'll have our closing ceremonies on New Year's Day.
Great. Thank you, Counselor O'Hara. That should be a great event. Counselor Welsh.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. I have a few things. I attended the wardens banquet on Saturday, November 16th in Brigden. Deputy Mayor Joel Field, Counselor Bill Clark, and Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, was also in attendance. There was a good turnout, and it was a very well-organized event and good time had by everyone present. I brought greetings on behalf of the council staff at the Veterans Luncheon hosted by the Legion, Ladies' Auxiliary, and the IODE on November 21st. The IODE presented the Legion with a beautiful metal bench to be placed outside of the Legion. The meal was great, and the veterans were all recognized and thanked for their service to Canada. I attended the Lampton County Committee meeting held on Wednesday, November 20th, and will continue to keep council informed. I also attended the Lampton County Council meeting held on Wednesday, November 27th, and will continue to keep council informed. I chaired the Lampton County Creative Grant Committee, held on Thursday, November 28th, to review the grant applications with information to be announced at a later date. I and Mr. Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, attended the Sarnie Community Foundation meeting held in Sarnie on Tuesday, December 3rd, and proved to be a good session. I attended the Lampton County Council meeting on Wednesday, December 3rd, to elect a warden and deputy warden for the next two years. Mr. Kevin Merritt was acclaimed to be the warden, and Mayor Jeff Agar from the Township of St. Clair was elected in to be the deputy warden. And Jeff, congratulations. On December 7th and 8th, with Christmas in the park, the Christmas market, parade, and all events turned out to be a great success. I also want to add special thanks to all the staff involved, service clubs, sponsors, and all the volunteers involved with the weekend. That'll take us on now to correspondence. I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Before I have that read, the only one that I'd like council to maybe consider pulling out a deal separately is C. Are you okay with that? So what I'd like to do is go from...
I'll move that we take C out and manage.
I was going to say we'll move to adopt A to E except for C and take it out. I'll need a second or to do that. Counselor Hyatt? Okay, any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion before we vote on it, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive and file correspondence items 11A through E excluding C.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to C, which is in regards to a request from the city of Branford regarding the redistribution of the provincial land transfer tax and GST to the municipality. So I'll ask for a move in a second or either to adopt that or not. Move by Counselor Welsh?
He actually includes three different ones, and one is quite different from the other two.
Sorry?
C actually includes three different letters, and the third one is quite different from the other two.
So we just use the city of Branford one, I believe. That's being...
Branford one?
Yeah, let's just do that, the first.
Branford. Branford, thank you. Branford.
So we're just voting on the first one, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Any other discussion from council? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
I do need a second.
Oh, sorry? I need a second or regarding the first part of C. Deputy Mayor Field?
Perfect. And that is for the town of Petrollia Council to support the city of Branford call for redistribution of land tax to municipalities.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Now, in regards to the next two on C's, would you like to just receive and file those? I'll need a motion to receive and file. It's moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll have the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that would be for the remaining items of item C to be received and filed.
Any discussion from council? Counselor Welsh?
Might we expect a report from the planner on how item D will affect what we just voted on for our own ADUs?
That's not part of this party's...
That would be after the motion.
Yeah.
It's in D, right?
Yeah.
So that'd be after this motion.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Did we vote on that?
Not yet.
I'll call all those in favor receiving and file the other two items. Opposed, that motion carries. So we're moving on now. But we've already dealt with...
Might we expect a report from the planner?
So, yeah, that has been received and filed. That would be something we can definitely bring forward to Mr. Benjamin's. I don't think he's here.
Okay.
We'll bring that forward to him.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence, there's none at this time. That'll take us now to delegations and presentations. And this is going to be a fun night, and I think we have three mayors here to make some presentations. I think what I'd like to do is ask the chairman, Denise, to come forward first, and then when we're finished at all, I'd like to ask all of the 150 committee to come forward. So, but let's start, first of all. Mayor Gary Atkinson is unfortunately unable to attend, but the deputy mayor, Nettie McEwen, and the CAO, Adam Sabansky, if you'd like to come forward, please. Just come up to the mic right there. Yeah.
Hey, yes, the mayor, he sends his best wishes.
Thank you.
And you said you had three mayors here. You've only got two and a half, actually.
You've got a helper.
I do. He's a good assistant. Okay, Plimpton, Wyoming wishes to congratulate the town of Petrollia on its 150th birthday. Being so close to Petrollia allowed our community to join in on the celebrations and share in the joy brought to the central Lampton community. One such event that was special for me was the RCMP musical ride. It was just fantastic. Of course, it doesn't matter where they are, they're fantastic. But please accept this certificate of appreciation as a token of our continued friendship and support. Thank you.
If you would just hold on for a minute. Okay, thank you very much. With Denise, the chairman of the committee, and then at the end, we're going to bring all the 150 up there.
Now, this is where they go in circles.
That's exactly how this works.
Well, this is a special night, and it's been an exciting year because the 150 committee have done such great work. The next one on my list is, we have Mayor Todd Case from the Township of Warwick.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lucely, Deputy Mayor Field, and members of council. It truly is a pleasure to be here tonight to honor you and bring greetings from the Township of Warwick on your 150th birthday. As many of you know, last year, we celebrated the 150th birthday, and the good folks of Petrollia, including council members, were there to help us celebrate. So this is our way tonight, being able to come back and repay the favor. So we wish you much prosperity and great future in the next 150 years, Mr. Mayor. And I'm just going to read what we've got here on our plaque if I could. "Town of Petrollia, Warwick Township Council extends heartfelt congratulations to the town of Petrollia on celebrating 150 years as a municipality. As you commemorate this significant milestone, we wish you continued success, prosperity, and many more years of growth and achievement." So congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and everybody in the town of Petrollia. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Case. Thank you. This is fun. Mayor Edgar, please come forward, and Deputy Warden.
That's kind of a hard one to take so far. Congratulations. I'd just like to say, on behalf of St. Clair Township Council, we congratulate you, and it's a really great milestone. So I'll read our plaque. It says, "Petrollia has built a legacy of community growth and resilience. As you celebrate this milestone, we honor your past and look forward to your future. Your neighbor, St. Clair Township." So once again, congratulations. It's a great...
It's good on salary.
And hide behind your chair.
How'd you guys get in the bathroom?
I asked until I requested.
Oh, good. Thank goodness somebody in charge.
What is the music?
Can you notice? You have to send that picture too.
Send you. Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you.
They're like, we're out of here.
Hey, oh, yeah.
Thank you so much. I ran over it. I didn't... Oh, running.
Get out now.
If I can, before everyone leaves, I and on behalf of council staff really want to thank the 150 committee for all the work they've done over the year. It's been a great year.
No problem.
All right, well, just to move us on to the community... Oh, sorry, we've got one more delegation from Mr. Horace Richter. Mr. Richter, come forward, please. Now, I will caution council, this is not to be debated because this is, we've already got legal advice, but we'll certainly hear him out. Go ahead, Mr. Richter.
No one has any guns. Your worship, Mr. Mayor, and all of council, I'm here to speak on behalf of a parcel of land on Eureka Street that was donated a number of years ago as a park, to be used as a park. And since that time, as a matter of fact, this spring, it was brought to my attention that the town had deemed to make its surplus and dispose of the property without making it a park. So I kind of frowned on that because that wasn't the intention from the get-go. So I had to consult with a solicitor, and he made me aware of certain things in the agreement or lack of certain things in the agreement, and with regards to certain bylaws and things of that nature. So I'm just here, I guess, to plead with council to reconsider their decision on declaring its surplus and disposing of it.
And a copy of your letter has been forwarded to each member of council, so everyone has read your letter. Again, because you first brought this to our attention through your legal individual, we can't discuss that because we've now, you've now brought the lawyers into this. But we have declared it surplus. It was done by council, I think, at our last meeting. Okay?
So it has been declared surplus? Is that what...
Yes, it has been.
Okay.
Okay.
So I guess really, there's no... If everyone in council has received a copy of that letter that was forwarded, then I guess there, everybody's aware of...
Yep, they are.
Through you, your worship, could staff receive a copy of that letter?
Yeah, that's a... I see that. Yes, I will make sure that staff... I see on mine that it was sent, or it was sent all of council, but you did not send it to staff. I'll make sure staff also get a copy of this letter.
I wasn't aware that staff was involved in the decision-making, I guess, so that was my error. I apologize.
No problem. Usually, everything goes through the clerk. So, okay, thank you for coming to address...
For clarification. The clerk does not make the decisions. The clerk just distributes the information.
But it's all recorded. Come, we can do the clerk. Okay? All right. Thank you for coming to address council. Okay? That'll take us on to the community announcements. I'll ask for a move in a second or to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll have the clerk read that motion, please.
And that would be for the council of the town of Petrollia to receive as information only, the December 9th, 2024, community announcements as presented.
Any discussion from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That takes us on to the employee long service award recognition, and I'd like to ask Mr. Todd Wolver to come forward to receive his 20 years. And I'd also like to ask Mrs. Bullock and Mr. Charlebois to come forward and make that presentation, please.
Get the mask band up.
Todd?
Thank you. Okay, well, that's you.
You can't sit down yet.
Come on back over for a second.
Now, this is where we start to roast you.
Deputy Mayor Field?
No.
Oh, just stand up in front of the speaker.
No, I just want to congratulate you, Todd. When Dave retired from the arena, we had, we lost the white-haired guy. You filled in and you took over.
Beautifully.
Beautifully. And, you know, you have that beautiful white hair, right?
Oh, yeah.
I think there's a song written about Dave and his hair at the arena. I think it's...
Yeah, there was.
The one Petrollia song. So maybe the next song you'll be written about too.
Yeah, maybe.
Congratulations on 20 years.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else from council? Again, I would personally like to thank you as well. I've spent a lot of time in that arena, so congratulations. Thank you. Next on the list is special recognition by the Petrollia 150 Committee. I'd like to ask Mrs. Denise Thibodeau-Sanders to come forward, please. Want to go down for that?
No.
Okay.
I have to address council?
Hey, everybody, just keep moving in circles.
Speak into the mic, Denise, so we can hear you. Thank you.
On behalf of the Petrollia 150th Committee, we would like to thank Heather Wright, the publisher, editor of the Petrollia Independent. Want to come up, Heather? I'm talking here.
Mrs. Wright, come forward, please.
Throughout the year, Heather has supported the 150th celebrations through advertising and editorial support. She worked along with the committee to keep very important announcements confidential, and that we really appreciate. The Petrollia Independent also put out two awesome historical publications that will be a keepsake, hopefully forever. So we appreciate that. So thank you, Heather, for all your support. Anybody on the committee that wants to add anything?
See if Heather would like to say... Heather, would you like to say a few words? More than...
Other than, you had a great group of volunteers who worked very hard. I was very impressed by them. But I also want to say that this edition is in the Lampton County 175 time capsule, and I believe it's the only thing outside of county stuff that's in there.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. If you're shorter in the front and come in a little bit closer on the ends, there we go, a little squishy.
Cheese whiz.
That's right, cheese whiz.
Hey, cheese whiz.
That's right, cheese whiz.
Stay there. Whoa, 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 stay there. One other picture.
Everybody in circles again.
There we go.
On the funny page.
That will now bring us to the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. I'll ask Mrs. Pearson, do we have anyone registered?
We do not, your worship.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to the financial accounts report. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that first motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that, your worship, is that the council of the town of Petrolia receive and file the October 23rd, 2024 through to November 22nd, 2024, general financial accounts.
Councillor Clark, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on to B.
Worship, we do have a declared conflict of interest from deputy mayor Field.
I see that. Thank you. And I'll note that deputy mayor Field has moved back from the table. You have a motion before you'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Wells, seconded by councillor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the October 23rd, 2024 through November 22nd, 2024, Lampton sanitation accounts.
All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, deputy Field, Mayor Field is back. That'll move us on to the next item. And councillor Patel has declared a conflict of interest and she has moved back from the table. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive. I'm sorry, to receive and file the October 23rd, 2024 through November 22nd, 2024, no one stands alone accounts.
Any discussion from council? Councillor Clark, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Thank you. All those in favor approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And note councillor Patel is back in her chair. That'll move us on to administration. We have a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk and Deputy Operations, regarding the proactive bylaw enforcement update, August to November 24. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Patel, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Legislative Services Clerk, Deputy Operations, dated December 9th, 2024, regarding the summary update on proactive bylaw enforcement in the town of Petrolia between August to November 2024.
Thank you. And I am pleased to see that list. And I do want to mention with everyone present that we do have bylaw enforcement in the town of Petrolia, and it is taking place. And I certainly appreciate this report. Any discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to the Committee of Adjustment, December meeting. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Wells, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the manager of Legislative Services, deputy clerk, human resources manager, Jessica Smith, dated December 9th, 2024, regarding the December 2024 Committee of Adjustment meeting.
Thank you. And I'll ask, Ms. Smith, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us to, we have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO Treasurer, regarding the town of Petrolia budget for 2025. And I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
I thank your worship, and that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 9th of December, 2024, and that the 2025 budget be approved as attached.
And I just want to mention, I want to thank staff for bringing forward and council for approving a 3% increase. I'll ask Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, not at this time, your worship.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Just a question. Uh, just, just curious on why we chose not to include any of the Ontario OPP offsetting updates in this version of the budget.
I think, yeah, I think I've certainly thought about that, but I think until we get something in writing and actually won't, when the check is coming, we'll deal with it at that time. I still do not have anything in writing. It's only a verbal phone call. So until we get something confirmed, and again, the other concern is what they told me over the phone, I'm hoping it's the same as what the government will put in the letter when we finally get it. So once we get that, council can deal with it at that time.
Just in terms of like $200,000 in terms of what it could mean to the budget is a pretty significant number, right?
But again, it's, you can't put something in the budget. It's like applying for a grant, putting it in, hoping we're going to get it and not get it. So until I've got it in our hands or the municipality has that, I'm just going to wait until we get it. Okay?
But do we, and do we think that the province is not going to provide the money? Like they came out and. Well, I'm sure 300, 300 municipalities are going to get all this money. Are they going to come back and say, sorry, we've decided?
No, I think we're all going to get it. I think we're all going to get it. It's, it's the exact amount I'm still concerned about. So, but yeah, that 77 million has been approved by the government. It's coming to the municipalities. Councillor Clark?
Also, we did, we did take some money from reserves. So if we, if we are successfully getting money returned to us from the province, then I think we can put it back in the reserves for when we do really need it.
Sure. I think the whole point is when we finally get it, I think that's when we should deal with it at that time. Okay? Anything else from, oh, councillor Hyatt?
I, I think that I would like to try to off to extend some tax break to the municipality if we're going to get this $200,000. So.
I, I, we will bring it back to council for them to decide what they'd like to do with it at that time.
So we're going to approve the taxes now and we can amend the taxes at a later date?
No, no, no. We're, we're approving the budget tonight as is.
Well, I would like to amend the budget then. Can I bring a motion forward to amend the budget?
You can.
Okay. So I think I'll, I would like to amend to 2% increase as opposed to 3% increase.
Right. I'll let a seconder for that, please. No seconder? That's lost. Okay. Okay. So we'll go on. We're still have that motion on the floor. All right. Councillor Hyatt?
And I'd like to amend to a 2.25% increase as opposed to a 3% increase.
All right, I'll ask for a seconder. Being none? Nope, that will be lost. Again, we have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote? I will ask maybe the clerk to read that, please.
Uh, just, sorry, just catching up one quick second.
Okay.
And that was, I'm sorry, from 3 to 2.5? Two and a half, 2.5.
Deputy Mayor Field.
So just, just to councillor Clark's comment, how much did we take from reserves? We did additional? Is that 250?
Yeah, I think, I believe it was 200,000 for the road, 50,000 for the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, your worship. Plus, if I may.
Go ahead.
Also, the last 10 years, not prior to 10 years ago, we actually look at a multi-year approach through budgeting or annual budget. We have a longer term forecast. There's stuff that happens up and down every, almost every day. For example, I will be coming back to council probably in February with an expenditure. I'm seeing expenditure that has just recently happened. That's fairly significant.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hyatt?
So I can understand that, but every year we seem to run a surplus on top of what we're putting in reserves anyways. Or 1, 2, 3% higher in terms of surplus on an annual basis versus on top of what we're putting in reserves on top of the 1.4, 1.6 million, right? So I still think there's some financial room that we can offer a break to the residents in terms of taxes. If you need $200,000 is true. So. So I'll go to the third motion. That would be to increase the taxes by 2.5% as opposed to 3%.
Didn't we do that already, the 2.5?
2.25.
2.25, okay. This is 2.5. Okay, you had amendment for 2.5. I'll need a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Seeing none, that, that is lost. All right, councillor Hyatt?
Oh, I will make an amendment to 2.75% increase instead of 3% increase.
I think this will be the last opportunity. Any seconder for the 2.75?
Correct.
No seconder? That's lost. I think we'll move on and vote on the motion. I'll ask the clerk to read that, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 9th of December, 2024, and that the 2025 budget be approved as attached.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that'll take us now to the fire emergency management. We have a report from Mr. Brian Clark, CEMC and Mr. Steve McLaughlin, alternate CEMC, regarding the 2024 Emergency Management Plan. We have a motion listed on the, the agenda. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive the report of the CEMC and alternate CEMC regarding recent review and revision of the Emergency Management Plan for the town of Petrolia and that the bylaw listed on this agenda to approve the 2024 Town of Petrolia Emergency Management Plan be enacted.
Thank you. And before I call the vote, I'd like to ask Chief Cousins or Mr. McLaughlin, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, other than the fact that I'd like to thank Brian Clark and Steve McLaughlin for all the work and effort they put into this. It has been a very time consuming event and it's, they're doing a great job. So.
Thank you, Chief Cousins. And I agree. I hope all of council have read that in detail. It's very important and it's well done. Thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on to the Parks Recreation Facilities. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation Facilities, regarding the pilot program update, the Petrolia YMCA Bulk Swim Passes. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated December 9th, 2024, regarding the update of the Bulk Swim Pass Pilot Program.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the report. I still get concerned about, it certainly just makes the revenue at the Y look good, but I'll leave it at that. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor of approving, oh, sorry, councillor Hyatt?
Feedback as to ways that the, the passes could be improved? It doesn't seem like there's lots of uptake on it. So was there any ideas that came from the public that might make it?
Yeah, Mrs. Bullock, go ahead.
Uh, through you, your worship. At this point in time, we haven't had any feedback, really, from what I've heard. But we're more than obviously willing to hear anything. I do know that the Y is certainly always looking to get feedback from their members and their visitors. So.
Great. Deputy Mayor Field?
Yeah, through you. And to, are they advertising it? Like, it just seems like we sold 20 passes. A lot of people that were talking about it wanting passes.
Yeah.
That were leaving town because of it, but.
Through your worship, possibly one area that Mrs. Bullock can highlight is some of those folks that presented to us were out of town residents. So that may have an impact on those that are sold.
Good point. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Okay. Anything else from council?
That we did, yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. This is now the second opportunity for anyone from the public to address council. Anyone wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. There's no unfinished business. We'll move on to the bylaws. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to move that the bylaws be read a first and second time. Moved by councillor Patel, seconded by deputy mayor Field. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. And I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, signed, sealed and numbered. I'll ask for a move in a second. Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Clark. And I'll ask the clerk to read those bylaws, please.
And that is for bylaw number 52 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to require an emergency response plan for the town of Petrolia for the protection of public safety, health and the environment, critical infrastructure and property, and to promote economic stability and disaster resilient municipality, be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number 53 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including December 9th, 2024, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And your voice did hold up. That's good. And before I call for adjournment, I just want to read a couple of things before I go and ask for a motion to adjourn. I'd like to take a few minutes before we adjourn tonight's council meeting, our last council meeting of 2024, to reflect on the year it has been. How quickly this year has gone by, a year that celebrated the 150th year of incorporation for the town of Petrolia. I am amazed at all that was accomplished by our CAO, directors, team, staff and this council. It seemed that every week our town was undergoing an improvement or development. Our roads saw reconstruction and upgrading, the start of our soccer pitch and splash pad area at the YMCA, the implementation of new legislation for building more homes faster, the VPP season and the 40,000 visitors we welcome to our town, and the overall everyday important items that may go unnoticed, but truly provide the highest quality interactions at the heart of our community. Continuing to make Petrolia the greatest town on earth. This council staff are so proud to have been part of the history books as Petrolia turned 150. Our community spirit that Sean was celebrating this milestone with hosting many 150 anniversary events that were made possible through the dedication of a five-year commitment of our 150th Anniversary Committee. As we look to 2025, I know that through the dedication of our staff and this council, Petrolia will continue to thrive, evolve and excel. I would like to take this moment to thank our staff, as it may not always be said often enough. But the appreciation of this council is always there. I cannot wait to see what 2025 will bring. To finish here on behalf of Petrolia Town Council myself, I wish everyone the merriest of Christmas and the very best for the new year. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the, or the December 9th, 2024, meeting of the council of the town of Petrolia to be adjourned to the next regular scheduled meeting of council to be held on Monday, January the 13th, 2025, or at call of the chair.
All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone.